That they went on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
And so the painting comes up to say, we're hoping that we're going to be.
Yes, now, so.
I'm trying to do it now, so I'm distracted.
Yeah.
Now, just getting organized.
Me?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, I thought you were on everything.
No, but I'm gonna go.
For some reason, I know Ian, yeah, well, I was just gonna mention that.
Could I give you my, could I give you my spiel about Envision Duxbury?
You, do you wanna do it when I mention, when, in the chair report, I'm just gonna say that they have it in the form?
On the twenty-third, right?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
So then you can, do you wanna publicly give your spiel? Cause I don't really have much at all, but if not, we'll talk about it later?
No, that's not.
Okay, I wasn't sure what you were asking.
No, I was just gonna, you know, there's no discussion of implications from, for fiscal revenue. So they're talking about, you know, planning and zoning and stuff. And of course, all of those decisions have implications for revenue growth, right? So, that was, I was gonna attend the forum and just say, so?
Okay.
What do you think?
That makes perfect sense.
But I think from, and I've already asked that guy who's co-chair, actually, co-chair and fiscal advisor, I said, you know, maybe you guys need to be involved with, once Envision Duxbury puts its act together, you guys need to come up with, you know, some sense of where the revenue growth's coming from.
Okay.
So.
Shall we? Okay. Call the meeting to order? If we could stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, high above God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes from February sixth, two thousand nineteen.
I move that we approve the minutes of February sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will mention Peter Quigley can't be with us tonight, so he is in Texas. Public comment. Alright, we're good. Reports for the school committee. Danielle.
Good evening, everyone. And a few things to report, we've had a very unexpectedly busy few weeks, so I just wanted to give you a few highlights. I'm not even touching on everything, these are just some things that have been going on. Last week, grade seven took a trip to the Museum of Fine Arts in Boston, where they were able to continue their learning on ancient civilizations, and they had a great time on the trip. We have held our MCAS infrastructure trials in Alden School, Middle School, and High School, and doing that allows us to kinda work out any kinks that might come up on testing days, making sure the kids can log on to the Pearson program where they're taking, where they take their MCAS test. And so, we did work out a few bugs already, so that's always good when that can happen on a trial rather than the real thing. We've been working really hard to make sure all the teachers are trained to be able to proctor the exams, because this is the first year that everyone is taking the exams on the computer, so.
Right.
We should be ready to go. DHS held their course selection night back on February twenty-seventh for high school students, including incoming freshmen, and Lisa Dembowski did a fantastic job organizing that event, and our curriculum supervisors and principals were there to be able to answer questions for parents and help them through that process of selecting the courses. And we have our DMS course selection night scheduled for next Wednesday, March twentieth, in the presentation hall, I believe at six thirty P M. Principal McGuire scheduled that event with the hope that the timing would allow some parents to be able to attend the angst presentation that we have later that evening, and so that was my other note. So next Wednesday, March twentieth, at seven o'clock in the Performing Arts Center, we have the angst anxiety showing, so we're hoping that a lot of families will turn out for that event.
Great.
We can maximize that. And that's it for me.
Excellent, thank you. Katie.
So tonight, I just have a quick update. I just wanted to update you all on the current balance in our special education reserve fund. So the current balance, as of today, is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. So, what that balance is comprised of is the fiscal year seventeen appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars, and then also fiscal year eighteen appropriation, which was a hundred and thirty-one, nine hundred and thirty dollars. So the total appropriation was five thirty-one, nine thirty. And then, we also received in some investment on earnings payments into the account. So that total is thirty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight, uh, five hundred and eight dollars, excuse me, and twenty-eight cents.
Thirty-four thousand?
So it was thirty-four thousand, right, so. So I actually sent it, an inquiry over to Town Hall, so they can just give us a little more information on, on what that comprises, so I can let you know about that.
Yeah, exciting.
So, so the investment, or the, I'm sorry, the total revenue is five hundred and sixty-six, four hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-eight cents. And then we also had several expenditures from fiscal year eighteen. So we had tuition expenses, and that totaled three hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. So that gives us the total current balance of one seventy-nine, seven ninety-four. And then, at Saturday's town meeting, we were also appropriated an additional one thirty-nine, one oh five. So, that will leave us with
Three eighteen.
Three eighteen, eight ninety-nine, ninety-three.
Awesome. Good.
And then at the next meeting, I'll have that quarterly report as of March thirty-first. So we'll be able to speak a little bit more about the special ed expenses that we've incurred to date, and then talk a little bit about the plan with the Special Education Reserve Fund. And hopefully, we can just keep the balance in the fund.
Great, that was gonna be my question, so bills that come in between now and the end of this fiscal year? Can they be paid for this, or only from the money that was there before this town meeting?
So the, the money from this town meeting hasn't actually been transferred into the account.
Okay, so that's for next fiscal year.
So, so, but they will transfer before, and they should transfer for, before July first. So, the first year, we were cert, we received it on June thirtieth, and then last year, we received, we actually received the funds in March, March twelfth. So I expect that it would probably be within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, good for the investment. Alright.
Okay, so we will talk more about it next meeting, but we're hopeful that we're not gonna have to tap into it this year.
Agreed.
So, it all kinda has to do with the big picture, sort of unexpendable balances that we had, do a lot of personnel shifts, so we're hopeful. I, I don't wanna overpromise, but we would love to be able to keep that in there.
So the, I'm sorry, the tuition expenditures of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-three was?
Last year.
Last year, that's what I thought, cause that was, we told them we would use it as part of operating last year.
Yeah, and we did, yeah, so.
Okay, that's what I thought, great, okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay, Tanner.
Okay, March is quite a busy month here. I got a lot of updates, so first, the Drama Club competed in states with their spinoff of Macbeth, and they won the preliminary round and are advancing. So last Friday, they actually performed for the school, and classes had a chance to go down and see that. I didn't, but I heard that it was really amazing. The second thing is, this past Sunday, the Winter Cheerleading Team won third at state's competition, and they're moving on to the New England Regional Competition. Also, this past Sunday, the Boys' Ice Hockey Team won the Division South Championship against Franklin and Bourne, and the team will be headed to TD Garden this Sunday to play Winchester.
Do we know what time? Still not yet?
Yeah.
Great day to go to Boston, St. Patrick's Day. Are you gonna have a theme?
Yeah, I know.
Again?
Yeah, we're just letting you make sure that we are the home team.
Okay.
So, we're supposed to find a lot of information out on Friday morning.
Tickets and?
Tic, well, there's a lot of logistical things, captains get to go up to the garden, and the MI shares a lot of things that we don't know yet.
Uh-huh.
We'll be tweeting out a lot of them.
Well, it's exciting, I had teenagers getting ready at my house and trying on different white jerseys, and then my husband was in the basement finding all the old hockey jerseys from my older, it was so much fun. But there was a line to get into Gallo Arena, it was all the way down Route six A, like, it took forever. But, it's exciting, it was, it was so much fun.
Yeah. Something else, the student council at high school is planning their annual breathe-out week, week, and there's gonna be a bunch of really cool things, like yoga and stress dogs, and Breadboard's gonna do daily catering, all with each specific themed day, which is Mindful Monday, Tranquil Tuesday, Wellness Wednesday, Treat Yourself Thursday, and Festive Friday. So that should be fun. And the, today, the high school hosted the Children's Hospital Mobile Blood Donor Bus, and they hit their goal of sixty donors, which is really big. So that's gonna help up to two hundred and forty children. Also, tickets for prom will be for sale, March twenty-fifth through April tenth.
What is a prom ticket nowadays?
It's gonna be, first week, it's gonna be a hundred dollars, first and second week, a hundred, third week goes up to a hundred ten. But it's at Gillette, and we have coach buses and all that.
Yeah, includes it.
And then, last week was an exciting time for the music department, as a couple of different bands traveled to Chicago, and students played, I heard that they played with school in Chicago, and a couple other places, so we have Mr. Pendaco here to talk a little bit more about that.
We're actually bringing Mr. Pendaco to work.
Yeah.
And then we'll, then we'll, there's no reason why he's here.
I just happened to be in the house, but, but yeah, the music department took their trip to Chicago this past weekend, it was a great trip. The wind ensemble, string ensemble, and the chamber singers all traveled out on Wednesday night. On Thursday morning, they had exchange concert with Hillsborough Central High School in Illinois. Schools comparable to us, they have, they have four bands and three orchestras, so they played and we played all together that morning, before we went out to Chicago for sightseeing. And then on Saturday morning, sorry, Friday morning, we all went to Northwestern University, and all the groups had clinics with professors from the school over there. So they had to, they learned all their music, and they got to work with professors about performance and playing. And then, we were able to go see a musical show in Chicago and have some deep dish, and a good time, it was really great.
Nice.
Great.
I saw some of the pictures on Facebook or somewhere.
They're coming out slowly, as they.
They had a blast, though, it's great.
Yeah, the kids had a real good time, so, they really enjoyed it, so.
Joe, sit tight just for a second, since you're there.
Since I'm here.
The real reason Joe was gonna be here tonight is because we wanna recognize him. On March first, at the Mass Music Edu, it's Mass Music Educated Association Conference, which is held in Boston, Mr. Pendaco here received an extremely prestigious award called the Lowell Mason Award. And so we wanted to bring him here tonight to, to acknowledge, it's, it's a tremendous accomplishment or acknowledgement. And Mrs. Donovan, you wanna come up and just talk a little bit about that? Maybe sing a tune or two?
How would you have to? So, it is a thrill for me to be here with Joe to tell you a little bit about the honor he got. So the Lowell Mason Award is one of the highest awards for any music teacher in the state, and it's for service to the state of, and to students all across the state. And Joe is an incredibly hardworking and incredibly modest person, so these are the things he'll never tell you about what he does. Joe has worked for years as part of the Southeast District Group of Music Educators, and a passion of his is the teaching of composition, which is a, an undertow skill in music education across the country. We do a lot of performing, we do a lot of ensemble work and general music, but the teaching of composition is something that is really underrepresented in music education. And it's a passion of Mr. Pendaco's, and probably almost a decade ago, he started a composition contest in the Southeast District, which has led to kids having people perform at district festivals, and having workshops, and working with composers, and students from all across Southeast Mass who are going to pursue composition as a skill and as a major in college, have benefited enormously from the program that Mr. Pendaco started. In addition to that, because that wasn't enough, he started it statewide. So at the, at the M E A, M M E A Festival, where he was awarded the Lowell Mason Award, he also has been running a similar program. And so kids from all over the Commonwealth have been able to come and work with professional composers and get feedback, which is just such an awesome experience for kids. Our, we've had many Duxbury students who, with the benefit of working with Mr. Pendaco every day, and Music Tech one, two, and three, and getting that help, but he's, he's been providing this under the radar for, for well over, across the state. And so, it is a huge honor that he was recognized by the music teachers across the state. And so, I, you know, I couldn't be happier for him, and he's a fantastic teacher here, but his impact is being felt all across the Commonwealth.
Mrs. Donovan, who's Lowell Mason?
Lowell Mason, I'm glad you asked.
I'm prompting you, cause you've already told me.
I know, so I made this joke, so Lowell Mason was the first music educator in Massachusetts. He was actually the first public school educator of music in the, in the country. And he was the choral director of the Park Street Church, right in the corner of Tremont and the Boston Common. And he convinced the Boston Public Schools to require music instruction of all of their elementary school teach classrooms across the city. And so he taught all the teachers in the city of Boston how to sing, and that was the instruction. And then he left from here, I think went to, either, I think went to New York, and, and so he is a cult hero of music teachers. But, it's, it's a really wonderful award, I'm very happy for Joe.
Great.
Uh, it is, yeah, they recognize a couple teachers across the state every year. So, Mr. Pendaco was actually the fourth music teacher from Duxbury to be recognized over the last ten to twelve years. So, Mr. Vinci was recognized, Mr. Madru, Mr. Arberg, and now Mr. Pendaco, so.
That's awesome, congratulations. Before the picture, I have a question. So the kids can ta, you teach a class at the high school?
Yes.
That the students can take?
Yes, yes.
Is it competitive, or like, is it?
No, the class I teach is open to any, to any, any student who wants to.
Is it hard to get into?
No, not very easy to.
That's great.
It's one of our most popular classes.
That's what I mean, I would think it would be very popular.
Yeah, it needs to have a waitlist. No, the class is, the class is actually very open, and there's a couple sections of, a couple sections of it. So it's there, I'm, I'm able to have a lot of kids in the classes, so it's not like one class, everyone's buying for, it's, it's fairly open. Most of what I do, and then there's multiple levels of that class that go up to the top, so the kids who, what, we end up, who I end up sending to the states from Duxbury, usually in that top level of that class, who have been with me for a couple of years now. Yeah, the, 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 the high school's been, been very great about giving me that, those classes, and the kids have been great about doing it still. And they do a good job of it too, so.
That's fantastic, great.
We know you already got a plaque, but we got you a little.
Oh, geez. Little something, which is.
Something socially conscious?
Congratulations, thank you, I appreciate it, thank you so much, thank you. Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you very much.
Get my good side.
Thank you. Wait, we need one for the.
You want us to sit over here?
Nothing mattered, we're not much more.
We're really cheap in the music department, and we've got a steak, so, just a, just a little, just says my name, but it is there.
Here, you gotta get a middle. There we go. Okay, excellent, thank you.
Great.
Joe has a lot of late nights the last couple of weeks, so.
I bet.
He's going home. Thanks for coming. Tanner, do we cut you off?
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, perfect timing. Okay, so it's me. I, my first thing is, and I didn't know if you would mention, the Mass Association of Student Council had a meeting, and Bernadette Farmer, who is the most adorable junior, went to the meeting, it's a thousand kids from high schools all over the state, or this region, I think, no, it was the whole state, she told me. And she was running for secretary, and she had to bring all her own stuff, and Mr. Files actually made her like a rocket ship that she painted, her thing was like Reach for the Stars, and it was this whole celestial theme, and she was elected. So she will be Secretary for the State, and it's a huge commitment, she has to attend monthly meetings, and she's just adorable. And it was nice to hear her say, she was inspired, I think when she was a freshman, by Sarah Gill, who is now a sophomore at Harvard, and her hope is to inspire, you know, younger, you know, freshmen now, so. I thought that was pretty impressive. Great. I just wanted to mention, on March twenty-sixth, there will be a public forum for Envision Duxbury, and that's the group sort of forward-thinking to what the folks are hoping the town will look like down the road. And on Tuesday, I'm on the Digital Literacy Committee, and we had a meeting, sort of, well, Cheryl runs, ran the meeting, and you can speak to some of the content. But the schools were reporting back on where they're at with trying to look at the digital literacy stan, curriculum standards. In comput, thank you, computer science standards. So, the feedback from Alden was, well, let me just preface by saying, it's, it's tough at the elementary level, cause you, you want enough but not too much, and how to put it in, and there was this whole discussion like email for kindergarteners, like, why would you even discuss that, but it's in the standards, right? So, maybe they Skype or email with somebody from another school. So it was a really interesting discussion, because you can get down to the minutia, but really, how does it fit into the education of our kids and what's important, and how do we do it without spending a lot more money? So the Alden School was piloting a couple of programs, and the third graders do the typing. But because it'll actually be a report card standard for all of the grades next year, they were sort of addressing that, and when the kids will learn it, and what programs, and Rita Marie was really great in saying how Brain Pop offers a lot of this, without us having to buy, buy more programs. And then for the high school, it was just sort of, we, we kinda know it's in there, but is it being done in all classes? Are we hitting that content standard, standard content in all the classes? And Mr. Fisher was saying, a lot of it's getting done in math classes, so just trying to make sure everybody can access that sort of curriculum, that piece of it. And then, oh, also at the meeting, Danielle was saying, the administrators read what school could be, because there is sort of a philosophical debate, are schools preparing kids for today's world? Like, are we sending kids out with the skills that they need to be successful in the jobs that, that are facing them? That, you know, aren't standard jobs that we all prepared for. So, the question was, maybe it should be a school committee read, so Danielle has?
Yep, and that book is done by the author of Most Likely to Succeed, who did that documentary a few years back. And that book is about, he visited fifty, all fifty states in a year, and visited schools in each of those fifty states, and he highlighted schools that stood out for positive reasons, and schools that were innovative, and schools that were more traditional, and based on the communities that he was visiting, but it was really interesting. So, it might be something you'd enjoy.
Okay. So I get to borrow it first, and I'm gonna read it, Matt's reading it now.
Cheryl has, this is the original, Most Likely to Succeed.
Okay, yeah, so it's this Ted Dinters, and.
Here's an extra copy if anyone else. And that Most Likely to Succeed documentary, we talked about possibly doing a showing in the, in the school, for after-school, for any teachers or any school committee members that wanted to watch it, so we might wanna think about scheduling that documentary showing, we can get some popcorn, and maybe spend a couple hours together watching that, so.
Alright.
Be good.
Awesome. And then I can't remember if in our last meet, it was before the Chapter Seventy Forum? So we, a bunch of us attended the Chapter Seventy Forum, which is basically just how the state, the state formula for allocating funds, and basically the requirement that schools have to spend in their district. We have to spend X amount of dollars, and this is the amount that the state allocates to us, and we're responsible for the rest. And then if we wanna go above and beyond, which in Duxbury, of course, we do, that minimum required amount, that's our decision. And it was really interesting, because obviously towns like us, the state gives us, you know, a tiny bit, the, the little bit that they're required to, and we're paying the rest, which we all know from town median in our school budget. But it reflects what, what we feel is important for our students to have. And then other schools that are more needy, get more state funding.
The forum, these forums are sort of driven by the fact that there was a big Foundation Budget Review Commission that's issued a report, and, you know, the, the short version of the summary, or the summary version of their findings, I should say, is that, you know, we need a massive infusion of cash from the state budget to be able to really kind of fully fund what it actually takes to educate kids in public schools. This has been a discussion that's been going on literally since the foundation formula was originally conceived in nineteen ninety-three. The good news is now that the legislature sort of has the courage, really, to talk about it, because it's a big number. And I've been pretty cynical about it over the years, but I, I don't think the legislature really wanted to know the number for many years. But now, there's, there's some real momentum. The big risk for, for Duxbury, and I made the point, I was on the panel that night, is that, very supportive of it, you know, we are a Commonwealth, and it's all for the greater good, but I am very worried that Duxbury is gonna get squeezed even more if there's a, if there's a funding change, cause it appears that most of the changes are geared towards urban districts, or districts that just don't have the same demographics, and hence the same needs as Duxbury does. And I'd said at the forum, and I've said this over the years, that the Duxbury's of the world don't get much love on Beacon Hill. So, I, I think it's really wonderful that our legislators came out that night, they're totally supportive of what we do here in the Duxbury Public Schools, and I just think we need to keep our foot on the gas and, and stay tuned. So anyways, I don't mean to tag on, but it, it was good. And yeah, congrats actually to Caitlin Sheen, who's one of our history teachers, social studies teachers at the middle school. She organized the whole, the whole event, so, thanks to Caitlin.
Yeah, it was great.
Yep.
So it's your.
I'd say, I have one, Joe, Joe was sort of my, my big part of my report, but I do wanna mention, and you all know, but on March first, we had our first, excuse me, Monday, March fourth, we had our first inclement weather day, and the school was closed, and after a lot of debates, and I involved you all in, in my anxiety around this decision, but we did decide to try our first ever Blizzard Bag Day. The, the original intent, and even our plan internally, and Julia, your, your words were ringing in my ear, that, you know, the original intent was to have one sort of normal, traditional snow day, and then potentially pilot, you know, move forward with our pilot. But in my mind there, that was gonna be in January or February or whatever, all of a sudden, it's like March, and we may not get another day, and we were very anxious actually to try it out. We had, our administrators and teachers put a lot of work in Cheryl, you know, a lot of work into this plan, and we really wanted to see if it worked, and if it's a viable solution long-term, so that was part of it. And part of it is, we're scheduled to get out Friday, June fourteenth, and so at this time of the year, if we can preserve our calendar, at least I wanted to, and so, so I made the decision to do a Blizzard Bag Day. I will say this, I, I could be totally wrong, and we'll do some real, some real surveying and evaluation, but it's really been, like, nothing but positive reviews on our end, and I will tell you, it was amazing how many kids passed in their assignment on that next, we had probably minimum fifty percent submissions the next day. And we're not gonna know until next Monday, cause that's, they had two weeks to finish the assignment, what it is, but just anecd, all I can say is anecdotally, I think it worked pretty well. You know, we'll see what happens, and I mean, yeah, we'll, I'll take any feedback, positive or negative, not necessarily, well, here is fine too, but at any time, but you know, I don't know, we'll see what happens, but it's, it's certainly innovative, I, I think it's gonna be a wonderful tool in our toolbox, and we'll see what happens, so, anyway.
I thought it was great.
For what it's worth, you know?
I had a couple of fifth graders that wanted to go sledding, and I said, let's do your Blizzard Bag first, and we learned about the biggest snowman in Maine, and it was kind of fun, so they had to read something and answer questions, and there were visuals, and but it was just different, it was cute.
Yeah, it was good, I, I mean, not that social media is a great measure of anything in life, but, but you do sometimes get a sense of what. do sometimes get a sense of what's appealing to people. And I, I was sort of exchanging, I don't usually do this, but I got into a little exchange with some parents early in the morning about the decision in a very positive fashion. And as a result, I got a couple of pictures sent to me of kids completing their Blizzard Bags. That got unbelievable traction on social media. And, and I just, I don't know, it was kind of like this feel-good day, or I don't know, whatever. So again, it's an anecdote, but it was pretty interesting. So, so we'll see how it goes. But we do, we do want to do some, even if they're informal surveying, we do want to see what the bugs were and to see if it's, again, to see if it's a viable solution long-term. But there you go. So, yep.
Great. I just wanted to mention the IT Steering Committee that Cheryl and Dr. Antonucci and I are on. We, we came to a decision about the consulting company that's going to be doing the IT review for the town. And so they'll be reviewing all the IT functions across the school department and all the town departments. And the purpose of the consultation is to evaluate whether there are any efficiencies and economies to be made by merging IT functions across the town. So anyway, that's the progress update on that. And so there'll be consultants coming into the schools and across town departments trying to, you know, understand what our current state of affairs is and then how to improve it. So we'll keep you posted.
Julie, just a clarification, not a clarification, just to add on to what you said. And Julie and I, and Cheryl are very, for lack of a better term, protective of the schools. But this study really is about systems and infrastructure and that kind of thing. And it's not looking at the instructional--
Right, exactly.
--technology as relates to instruction in the classroom.
It's the business end of things.
Yeah, that's, yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to--
Yeah, that's right. Absolutely right. Yeah. And interestingly, just while we're on the topic, one of the people that our committee interviewed was a gentleman who was the, he was the IT Director for Andover Public Schools. And then Andover merged its public school and town IT functions several years ago, a number of years ago. And he runs the whole show. And it was really interesting listening to him as to how that process worked and the kind of advantages and disadvantages and stuff. So, you know, the jury is out on that, but it's worth investigating. But certainly the priority across the committee is to, well, priority, the recognition is that the, the school district is pretty far advanced in the way that it manages its IT function. So thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Thanks to Cheryl. And, and so, you know, we'll keep you posted.
Cheryl, you need one of those no buttons. Cheryl knows everything. I'm like, does Cheryl know? Call Cheryl.
John and I are actually going to talk with the Digital Learning Director in Andover because that tech director hadn't been hired by Andover until after the merger happened.
Oh, right, okay.
So now the Digital Learning Director is basically the only IT person in the district. So we'd really like to get a feel for what, what was the impact of the merger for the schools?
Yeah.
And on the side.
Yeah. It's worth doing, for sure. Great.
Okay, discussion items.
Jim and John?
First up, physical education graduation requirements.
Are you guys projecting--
Do you guys have a presentation? Should I move?
Nope.
Give me pockets. Okay.
Just an extra. Just an extra. Good evening, again. Thank you for having us. So, you know, as we wrote to you, we're here about the graduation requirements for physical education. And I want to begin by saying in proposing this revision, it comes really from, our proposal comes with two really big things in mind. First is the curriculum that the Health Committee developed three years ago and, which is what preceded the graduation requirements and proposed these changes, right? Which is very important to our school and to our students and for which there is an absolute need for. We are, as a, as a school, as we talked about last year over here, balancing that need with the, the operational, things that need to be done to actually achieve it. And now, two years after the policy was fully, was implemented and one year after we've kind of postponed that 11th, 12th grade, as designed, there's a flaw in it, which, or something we can't really get past, which is we don't have classroom space to do it. And so we're struggling with that. And we're also struggling with the, the impact of that class's design and what it does to our student schedules in 11th and 12th grade. And so we've come tonight with this proposal to ask that, to make the revision, not to alter the curriculum as proposed in any way, except to shift where it occurs and introduce a, a new element, which is a health fair for 11th and 12th graders so that they get that information if they're not in sports, strength and conditioning, and team sports, and team adventure, where that curriculum is, is already there in one way, shape or form, and will certainly be there in a, in some way, shape or form. But also so that we have, similar to our Credit for Life Fair, a health fair for students in 11th and 12th grade as they move, 11th or 12th grade as they move on from Duxbury High School.
That'll be mandatory?
Exactly the same way Credit for Life is.
It's essentially set up for that the whole group would be able to go to it. So, I mean--
And they'll have a class period where they can access it?
It'll be like a whole--
It'll be-- Think of it the way Credit for Life was set up.
Okay.
And again, some of this we're looking at, you know, would a full day, a half day suffice? Are there speakers that we can bring in that are a little more timely than trying to get them into a classroom?
Okay.
So those, these are the things where, to be honest, we looked at what Credit for Life was doing and sort of how well that was received. And we're looking to sort of piggyback on that idea and bring in pieces of the health curriculum that are really geared towards those juniors and seniors, seniors especially that are just about out of here. Some more life things to possibly get them ready, which, you know, we feel they're going to be, it's going to be better received than a sit-down 11th, 12th grade class.
Right.
Especially since we don't really have a place to put them.
Right.
So.
Okay.
And in regards to the standards, the, we had already set up the template for that 11th, 12th grade class. The shift is, we're already doing them in ninth and 10th. The one piece that we weren't doing in ninth and 10th was ecological health, which is a unit that they, that they have basically developed. They'll simply put that unit into one of the ninth or 10th wherever it fits better. So it's one of those things that, the teachers have done the work. Now we're simply trying to get it into a space that better serves and better fits within our current schedule.
So how does that affect the amount of classroom versus physical movement time in--
So the requirement's still four. So they take the ninth grade wellness, the 10th grade wellness, and then they basically have the two electives--
Right.
--which depending on, we'll be here, I'll be with Heather next year because we're coming to come up with like a unified PE class--
Right.
--which is a year away. But we already have the project venture, we have the team sports, we have the strength and conditioning, where we have not really had any issues having people fill their requirement.
Sure, sure. Okay.
So does that mean there are only two semesters of actual like gym class, whether it be in physical?
Oh, you're, when you're talking, and that setup, yes. Well, the ninth and 10th grade, there are physical parts of it, they're introduced--
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so it's called--
So it's part health and part--
It's part health and part. And what Billy, basically what's going on is certain parts of the physical activity in ninth and 10th, these health units would be expanded and may take away a little bit.
Okay, that was my question.
But it's awesome, but yeah.
That was my question.
So it's not, we're not shoehorning it in. The idea is that it'd be expanded, the units that were running in those two classes.
Right, okay. So there's more classroom time and less--
Correct.
--physical movement time in those classes. Okay. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I requested already, but I, it would be, being a visual learner, it would be somehow, if you could put together a chart to--
Yes.
--show us how--
That's the chart, I just didn't--
Yeah, we will--
Okay.
Yeah, we will absolutely provide the frame.
You wouldn't mind just sending it along so that if, if somebody asks us, so what's going on, we can make an intelligent response?
Absolutely.
That would be great.
Absolutely. We'll get that to you quickly.
Okay. Good. Okay. That was my question. Pardon my question.
No, that was going to be my question as well. I'd like to see the shift visually of how we're making sure that everything's included.
Right. And essentially what it is, is we had the units set up and it's basically moving a lot of the classes, if it's substance abuse, the community, and public health, these are boosters of classes that were already developed in the ninth and 10th, so we'll expand on those units a little bit, pieces that may be different. And the idea between the health fairs is to try to pick up stuff that's a little more timely and what's going on.
Do you, I mean, do you have a kind of a, some high-end level ideas about the health fair that will be also being included in there?
We have various ideas. I mean, I try to, and again, speaking more on sort of the athletic side, vaping, which I consider a huge issue within the school, it's all schools.
Yeah.
Trying to get as much information from different places to bring that into because that seems to be, to me speaking, probably a little more personal, that I think we are finding issues with.
Right.
That, because it's something that can be done very easily even in the school, where it's not like, you know, back in the day where you could smell the cigarettes, you know?
Our, our, if I can just add to some parts, so Mr. Holgan and I have met a couple times with our PE teachers over the course of the year. And the idea of the health fair really came from them, right? That's something that they feel they can very, very easily do and have a, and a pretty significant impact. And that they have the resources and people and the, through the MIA and other organizations to bring in the speakers--
Okay.
--to help get the more timely and, and more, I guess maybe direct speakers that have a bigger impact.
Yeah. I just, I think it's, it's really important for us to be able to tie it back to the work the committee did and the--
Absolutely.
--concerns that they highlighted, to show that we're shifting how we're doing it, but we're still addressing those concerns. Because that was a big effort and it was a very big focus within the community. That was happening when we were campaigning and people were very focused on the fact that we were going to have a full four-year health and wellness curriculum. And now we're making what I think many will consider a significant change. So we really do need to be conscious of that and, and document and be able to show how we're addressing those issues.
And we will, we'll provide you with those--
Great.
--very soon. But that is something I absolutely agree with. I mean, the, if we roll back three or four years, our health requirements were minimal.
That's right.
It was, it was ninth grade health--
It was the ninth grade and what units we had were--
Were very basic.
This is really taking the state standard--
So maybe it's kind of a holistic view of what you have done in the last three years, plus the changes that you're making to what the proposal was, some things that we have a--
From where we were four years ago to where we are now has been an enormous amount of growth for us as a district. And we're in a much better spot. The last part of that plan that's conceived requires classroom space that we just don't have. And that's the, that's our biggest roadblock right now.
Right.
And it's, and it's on operation.
Sorry. As I say, we also have, in the middle school, we've developed a seventh grade health curriculum. We brought in what Joe DeAndre's been doing in the sixth grade and what Deb Praddy's been able to expand upon in the eighth grade. It's sort of, it's more of a six through 12 that you're seeing a lot of changes. It's not just, you know, this isn't just an 11th, 12th grade health class going, you actually see an expansion from six up.
So can that go on the chart? Or like if you do--
Yeah, I, I was going to say, my chart I have is the high school chart, but yes, I can find the, we, we have our middle school chart.
Yeah, just so people can see the flow--
Full.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
How that committee impacted even the middle school curriculum.
I think this is something that we need to--
Yep.
--get out in front of.
I just want to say, actually, I mean, the, the reality is, it's like, I mean, we agree with you, Shannon, it's like it's super critical curriculum. It's just some things that we develop are impossible to operationalize, right? And that's kind of what we're talking about. Ironically, I think there'll be, it might be even more impactful using the fair model, at least for Credit for Life. You know, for lack of a better description, it's just, it's more authentic and it's more timely and relevant for these kids and it, and it's just more direct. And I have some experience with that in my former district, not at this level, but we used to do an end-of-year seminar for seniors because, and they can, they can handle more, they're more mature. So we were able to, by the end of the senior year, talk about some very significant health issues, especially as they were going to college, binge drinking, sexual assault, you know, a lot of different things that you can't necessarily do when they're younger. And it's, it's a little harder to do in a, in a classroom setting. So I don't know. I mean, the devil's going to be in the details on this for sure. So I'm not, don't mean to, you know, overdefend the decision, but I actually think it might end up being a real positive and really go along with the spirit of that original kind of demand for the change.
Yeah.
So, because it's, it's critical that we justify, you know, justify it, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I look forward to seeing the details. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Cheryl is going to give us the status of the one-to-one Chromebook rollout. Very exciting.
Which we've been working on for a few months.
Right, because all the kids with their current laptops are going to have to turn them in.
Just, okay. So we've actually been working on the, the tech team and Jim and Sarah and Danielle and John and I have met multiple times on the one-to-one rollout. So we've been working on it for much of this year. We will be getting in 1,900 Chromebooks, grade six through 12, including 100, that will include 100 spares. The vendor will do white glove setup. My staff will do the bullets, unbox, connect to Wi-Fi, install management console, asset tag, student name, add to inventory spreadsheet and re-box. We do have a potential vendor who for the same price will do all of that for us. So I'm kind of investigating that at the moment, a very big vendor. So we're kind of looking into that because we have never done anything like this. The most we did was hand out laptops, the, the Apple laptops. So we're taking in 1,900, 1,800 MacBook Airs, repurposing a third of them, getting them back out to the elementary schools, doing something with the rest, the excess, and then getting in 1,900 Chromebooks that we have to set up and get back out again. So this is unprecedented for us. So this is, this is a lot of work. So then we'll need to get the wireless Mac addresses to whitelist and then group by homeroom, iLab, depending upon the school. That vendor that we're in initial discussions, discussions on actually said they would do that as well. Sixth grade Chromebooks will go into carts that are being purchased as part of the lease. And so the sixth grade students will continue, will pick up their laptops, and this is a little bit different than before, and in the morning and return them in the afternoon. We have bags that we're looking at and we'll make final decisions in the next couple of weeks on those. The old MacBook Airs, 300, so the current carts from grade six will become carts of MacBook Air devices that teachers can sign out at DHS and DMS. They also will be world language capable with DIL software. DIL is the language lab software. It is not ready to run on Chromebooks yet, and so they will use those MacBook Air carts in their classrooms until DIL is ready to get it out to Chromebooks. They're working on it. Two of Nora Hughes's students require larger screens, so we'll take care of those. And then Chandler will get 312 laptops for their full second grade. They'll get shelves for their, the 10 classrooms to accommodate them. And they will get a cart for their library, a cart for the first grade, and some for their maker space. The reason we're putting them down into Chandler is so that the second graders can begin to learn to type because when they come to third grade, they will be taking MCAS and will need the typing skills. And right now, all they have is iPads. The price quote information is listed. We are looking to self-insure, offer parents self-insure. They'll pay a fee each year. Those who don't voluntarily self-insure with us can, we will charge them as we have done in the past for repair, replacement. If the family doesn't participate.
Cheryl, can I just make a comment about the self-insurance? This is a change. You know, we've used a third-party company or whatever, however you say it.
Insurance vendor.
Insurance vendor. And this is a model that, that I've personally worked under and it's, it's interesting. I mean, we, we, we're effectively the insurance company, the district, and so we have, we have, we have control over those, those insurance funds. The reason I think you can do that with Chromebooks, that you couldn't do that with MacBooks, is that we can do a lot of the repairs ourself and they're much cheaper. And so it's, it's kind of a model that I'm pretty confident in. And so we'll see how it goes. It's also going to be much less expensive than the current insurance that families are paying. So it's a way, we're going to see how it goes, but it's, it's going to, I think it's going to be a really successful model.
Okay.
Cheryl, can I ask a question before you go back? You said the sixth grade, one of your bullet points under the DPS tech staff, sixth grade Chromebooks will go into 10 carts, blah, blah, blah. And you said that's different from what they're doing now. Is it just because carts are available? What, what's the difference in sixth grade?
So in sixth grade, there is currently a cart in every sixth grade classroom. So the students would walk into the classroom and use the laptop there. The problem is the elective classes don't have laptops, number one. Number two, if you count all the devices in all the different classes, they have more laptops than they have students. And so, you know, for equity to get, to, to get, we need to get it to one, to one because there are other places in the district that could, could use devices. So we talked to Sarah and, and Sarah talked to the teachers and stuff and how did they want it to run? So they, it could be in carts or, you know, we don't think that the kids are ready to take the laptops home in sixth grade, so leave them. So we're going to put the carts in their homeroom. They'll go in and pick up their laptop, go the day and then bring it back and put it back in and plug it in. And they will be, it will be their own laptop. So they'll be, they'll be their, a name tag or something on each of the carts where their laptop rests. And it, it'll be charged and all ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
It's a hybrid, it's like a hybrid model.
Right.
The teachers know about that decision and they've known since probably before, I think before, either before or just after the holidays. They were involved in the decision.
Great. So there's no curriculum changes for it?
No curriculum changes. Elective teachers are very happy to know that their students will be coming in with a laptop.
Thank you.
So collecting the MacBook Air laptops, this is something that you need to know. We need to collect the laptops when the students leave school because we have to repurpose them and get them back into other uses or just, or dispose of them or, or whatever. So senior laptops, the tech team will collect senior laptops as usual after their final exam. We sit in the hallway and they bring them down. Sixth grade laptops, when the teachers in the sixth grade are done with their laptops, whether it's the last day of school or a week before the end of school, they'll let us know and we will begin to assess those laptops because we've got to find just over 600 good laptops to get back out. Grades, because these laptops will be five years old. Grade seven and eight laptops, those laptops will be collected in classrooms. Teams will notify Sarah when they are ready for the laptops to be picked up because they do a lot of field trips and stuff like that the last week of school. So they may be ready to have us get them a little earlier as well. And grades nine and through 11 laptops, each day during final exams. Students who are done with their final exams will hand in their laptop to their teacher where we will collect them.
When they're done with all of their exams?
Yes, when they're done with all of their exams. So we will be storing and working on laptops in the, in the two band orchestra rooms. They have double doors. We'll be able to get pallets in there and it's a lockable. The rooms will be available a week or two after school ends.
Cheryl, can I interrupt?
Sure.
You said you needed 600 or 612 good laptops. Is there any risk that you won't find 612?
I'd be, we also have some money to repair laptops. We have equipment repair money. So we will fix whatever needs to be fixed and get them back out.
Okay, great.
It'll be a third of the.
That's right.
It's a third of the fleet, of the fleet, basically.
Right, but they are five years old.
They are five years old. They will be in carts. And we have found that we have seven and eight-year-old laptops in Alden.
Right.
And they, for current purposes, are, are fine.
Oh, okay.
What's going to limit us in Alden is MCAS testing and the, and the.
Requirements?
Requirements for the, for the, the backend, the operating system.
Sure, sure.
So.
Thank you.
So the Chromebook handouts, the night before school starts, the tech team will move grade seven through 12 laptops to the iLab and homeroom classrooms with a checkout form and bags. Students will sign they received their laptop, receive a student-parent Chromebook agreement, and they will get a Chromebook use and care guide. Actually have a sample of Westwood's. Parents will sign off on the student-parent laptop agreement in those grades in the back to school forms. That will, this will likely be different for seventh grade as well as sixth grade. Sixth grade, the carts will be moved to the designated locations when Sarah determines the exact date the sixth grade teachers want their carts. Lots of times in sixth grade, they're coming into a new building. They're getting used to the environment. So they actually don't start with the laptops for a week or two. They'll be all set and ready to go and we'll just roll them in when they're ready. Seventh grade, it's the first time that those students will be taking them home. We won't, normally we meet with those parents when they pick up their laptop. So Danielle, Sarah and I have talked about having a, a night with the parents. And Danielle wants to do some work with the teachers, with those students before those laptops are given to the students so that they get some extra, this is how, how you use and take care of those. So we don't have the exact timeline of when the seventh graders will get their laptops. It will be right after school starts. But we have some planning to do between Sarah, Danielle and I.
We've been talking a lot about this. I, this is just my personal opinion. I, I just do think we need to kind of reset our expectations a little bit about how students treat these machines. I, I just feel like we've gotten a little loose with the care and maintenance of it. And it's, and it's, this is our opportunity to start fresh with, with students and parents and just, you know, set, set the expectations. I mean, it's school property. It's a, it's a expensive piece of equipment. So this, we're going to just, again, use this opportunity to kind of, to kind of reset. They need to last. I'm stating the obvious, yeah.
And at this point, we, we believe that the eighth grade laptops will go into the homerooms. But again, that will be up to Sarah, Danielle and I prior to handouts. So our work priority will be Chromebooks for the first day of school and all essential work to prepare for the start of, of school so that any, any tech equipment and any rostering that needs to get done. The MacBook Air carts then would be second priority. So if something needs to not get done, it would be, we would actually be working on a lot of those prior to getting the Chromebooks in. But it may be that some of the carts don't get out onto the floors immediately. But, so, and then any other capital projects that aren't required for the first day of school will likely put off until after school gets started. But there are some that we need to do. So we're looking at how can we get all this work done in the summer?
Piece of cake.
Leprechaun.
Have you, have you got enough staff? You're talking about hiring temporary summer.
I have two students already that have come to me and I haven't even started putting it out there yet.
Sure, great.
But we need, we need bodies.
Yeah, I thought.
We need bodies.
Yeah, yeah. We built that into the budget, actually.
Yes, we did.
So the, on the first page, those MacBook Airs that get signed out to the high school and the middle school for the world language classes?
It's actually for all, they're actually for all classes, but there'll be a couple dedicated to world language.
Yeah.
The DIL software is a software that students use to record their oral.
So they speak into it?
Yes, they speak into it.
So they would use that for homework? They wouldn't need those, would they take those computers home?
Uh, no, they wouldn't take those computers home. There are others, there are other pieces of software that they can do, use that. There isn't any software currently like the DIL software. We actually looked at a couple and actually one said that they had it and they don't, don't have it. DIL is working on it. The, the world language teachers really like DIL and they would like to keep that. So they'd actually like to wait until DIL is ready to go for the Chromebooks. So they will be using the carts and there, there are going to be 10 carts of MacBook Airs throughout the middle school and the high school. And they're, they're, they have world language classes in the middle school and the high school. So they'll have first dibs on those carts. And we've talked to Diane about it. They did a survey. There are only one or two teachers that use it multiple times a week. So we, we think that this will work and, and she's all for it.
Cheryl, do you have a ballpark estimate? John was saying, you know, some of the students might not have taken care of their laptops too well. Have we like lost, are there, do we have a ballpark on how many just are non-functional at this point? Is it really small? Like, do we have any that just relate?
So we have a small number every year that are either water damaged or something like that. And we, and that's normal for any school and we pull them out and repair them. But if you look at the student laptops, the damage that you see is a lot of drops. They may not be using their cases, pulled off keys, stickers all over them, written on.
Hinges, like they, they'll grab them by this, right? Things like that. That's the kind, that's the small, slight changes that we can, we can make and manage.
It's more abuse of the machine than it is, because those laptops will last seven or eight years. We repair them. A lot of that damage though, that type of damage is on the students to pay for. And so therefore they don't bring their laptops in to get fixed because that's not damage covered by their insurance.
So what happens in that case if they're without a laptop and they didn't pay for insurance?
So if they bring a laptop in that needs to be repaired and they don't have insurance, we send an email home and then followed up by a call saying that you signed the student-parent laptop agreement. Here's a copy of the agreement. This is what you owe. Because on the agreement has all the prices for everything. And we generally, for the most part, do not have any problems.
So you give them a loaner or replacement?
Yes, we give them a loaner that they can use during the day until they bring their check in.
What about homework? Is there ever a child, I mean, are there kids without laptops or is that?
So once they bring the check in, they can take the loaner laptop back and forth home. But we have not had anyone say, I need to do my homework. And we don't check to make sure. It's the, remember the old white MacBooks that the teachers used to carry? Like 10 years old?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You give those out?
That's what we give out for loners. So.
The clunkers.
Yeah, we get the check pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Most families, most families, I know I'm generalizing. A lot of families have another computer user, yeah. You trying to tell us something about your?
Nope.
Kids Chromebook, I mean, kids MacBooks.
She's got the same one that she got in seventh grade. It works. Hopefully the homework's getting done tonight.
Cheryl, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we have a proposal to revise the facilities and field rental fee schedule. Katie?
So I included in the packet, I have a copy of the current fee schedule. So you'll see the current fee schedule that we're using. And what we're doing is we are charging groups to come in and use certain facilities, whether it be fields, classrooms. If they use some of the auditoriums, we are charging them a specific rate based off of these fee schedules. So the current fee schedule, the only location that the current fee schedule has kind of a tiered rate system is for our fields. And we found as we've been researching some of the fee schedules that other school systems use surrounding us that mo, all of the school systems actually use the tiered rates for all of the locations. So I've included the, the current fee schedule just for your reference. And then what I've also included is the proposal that we have. So what we're hoping to do is break out our fee schedule based on these three tiers. So obviously for any of our sports clubs and organizations that are run through Duxbury Public Schools, we wouldn't be charging to use any of the classrooms or the fields. For some of the nonprofit groups and some of the Duxbury youth programs, we have a rate schedule in place. And the rate schedule is, is a reduction of what we would be charging any of the for-profit groups. Which is that third tier and that is going to be the highest rate that we have here. And then we're just keeping the language saying that the use of all of the school facilities will be at the discretion of the superintendent. And the appropriateness of the activity will always adhere to the proper use of a school building and/or the grounds as detailed in the school committee policies, which I included at the back of the packet. And then in addition to that, in lieu of the above-mentioned schedule, so if there are any facilities that are maybe not listed in this rate under the room space and service column, or if there's any maybe like modification to the terms. So if someone wanted to rent the space for an extended period of time, we're saying that we reserve the right to contract with those organizations for either an annual or a variable term for the use of the facilities. So that's the proposal. And we're, we're proposing that it would be effective April 1st. And we would send notification out to anyone that is scheduled to use the facility to alert them of the change in the rates. So that is our proposal. And then I've also included just a comparison of some of the fees in the other surrounding communities just so you have an idea of what some surrounding towns are charging. And so what we did, and we also compared with Pembroke, we took a look at Silver Lake. So we, we looked at more than just the, the three towns that I've put on this comparison. But it just gives you an idea of kind of the range of what the other towns are, are charging. And we tried to be reasonable about, so, so the rates that we're proposing are somewhat different than what we're, what is on our current fee schedule. But we're trying to stay in line with what we are saying is reasonable and expected to use these facilities. And then, so I also just included, just in case, and just for further information, I included the revenue that we have been receiving in. And the revenue goes into our facilities use revolving fund. And so I just included that information back to 2015, just as a point of reference. So you can see, and it's, it's interesting because it, it definitely goes, varies from year to year. So we're not seeing a consistent revenue stream come into that revolving account. It's definitely variable, like I said, so.
I wondered if that included the PAC rental in that line item? Is that what's causing the variation?
I don't know if it's the PAC or if it, it might actually be due to some of the timing too because it is our revolving fund. So we're sending out the invoices and then there is potential that we might be invoicing, say if teams or clubs are using the facilities at the end of the school year, if it's like maybe a camp in June or something. So we'll send out the invoice and then it might be posted in the next fiscal year. So it just, it kind of, it just varies.
Right, okay, great.
So, and then that, that's a great point too. The PAC is one of the examples that I had that would fall under that kind of the, we reserve the right to enter into agreement with any other outside parties that wanted to use the facilities. that wanted to use the facilities for an extended period of time.
Yeah.
Katie, can I just add to?
Yeah.
This is great work. I mean, Katie has done a lot of work, um, along with Chris Cass on our office. And this, the, the fee schedule is one part of the work they're doing, but they're also looking at, um, how we bill.
Right.
You know, it's, 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 it was in need of some attention.
Right.
And so I just want to kind of give, you know, thanks to, to Katie and her, and her staff because it's, it's going to be better. It's sort of a lot of inconsistencies in our current model and we need to, we need to do better. And, uh, this is just one piece of it, but this is a, a separate piece.
Yeah, so definitely looking into the operations of, um, the billing, um, we've looked into and we're hoping to roll out. Currently, we only receive in the billing via check and there's, um, so for me, I'd love to be able to provide more data around the usage and
Sure.
who, um, is maybe perhaps like paying the most, but I just can't really do that with the data that I have now.
Right.
But we're hoping if we can roll this out, um, and allow the users to pay online,
Yeah.
that it would be so much easier to pull down their reporting. Um, and then I, I think operationally it would be easier for them to, that they can just go online and process the payment when they receive in the invoice rather than having to write a check, mail it in and then the wait time that occurs with that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, and I would encourage everybody to keep their ears open for some organizations that might rent the PAC. Because that, you know, the, it used to be, um, booked every year by the
Jose Mateo.
Jose Mateo Ballet to do the Nutcracker. And then he moved to Boston and that's been a, a serious dent in the income. And then I think part of the variation you were seeing in the trend, a couple of years ago, uh, Duxbury High School hosted that, um, Southeastern Massachusetts Music Educators Con- Contest for the bands. And so that was part of, held in the PAC and, and so, um, that really has a huge impact.
I should mention too, so the PAC is actually, has a separate revolving for their revenue.
Oh, does it? Okay.
So they're not even, and so that's why I didn't include any of the, the rate information.
Right, okay, sorry. I, I misunderstood.
That's managed separately from that, uh, from this schedule.
Yeah, okay.
But it would still appear in the, um,
No, it has a completely different.
Oh, oh, sorry, I misunderstood. Um, just, I, I just want to make a comment about the PAC too. Um, I can't remember if we've talked about this here, but in the context of capital projects or just needs, but we have a major issue with our orchestra pit.
That's right.
I literally, quite literally went down and saw it for myself the other day, Danielle, Sina Two and Katie and, um, without getting into too much detail here, but it, it takes on water.
Right.
And so we have looked at, uh, we need to fill it with concrete and it's, it, it's hard to describe. It's indescribable unless you see it. It's a huge project. I mean, it's somewhere in the range of forty to fifty thousand dollars if not more of concrete and some other work. Um, so we're trying, it, I would just say it is a priority. It's actually a health priority.
Yes.
Um, and so we're looking at ways even, even to fund it potentially with, um, within the operating budget. Um, I'm also talking to, um, our area legislators to see if there's any possibility of
Grant fund.
getting earmarked or something like that, a grant. And so I, I would just say it, it has to be fixed for so many reasons. Um, probably the least of which, but also super important is that it's not really functional
Right.
for some groups, um, who, um, it, it's hard to describe. We should take a field trip one day as a committee just to look at it, but, um, without doing the work we need to do, it's kind of impossible to extend the stage and all the large groups need, need a stage extension.
Okay.
Um, but anyway, I just want to put that, we, that's something Katie and I are working on and, and actively actually.
Great.
Um, but I just wanted to point that out in this conversation.
Cause it's not on Brian Cherry's list, wish list, is it?
Well, it, it,
Not right now.
It is, it is. It didn't, it didn't end up making it for some other
Right, sure.
more timing reasons than anything, but, um, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's just a real issue. We can't, we have standing, we have standing water. Again, it's hard to describe with standing water under the, under the stage, yeah.
Is that coming out from the ground or is that coming from when it precipitates?
Ground, ground.
Yeah, that's what happens when you build schools on a marsh.
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. The good news is we know where the water, we know, we know where the water table is, so.
Nice.
Cause we see it.
I don't know if the engineers were, uh,
Yeah, but it's like back May.
Okay, um, so Danielle, revisions to policy IHBG homeschooling.
Yeah, so as you know, I'm the homeschooling coordinator and, um, throughout the summer, we have families that contact me to, um, get their homeschool programs approved for the school year. So we have about twelve students currently being homeschooled in Duxbury. And, um, the parents do a wonderful job outlining the curriculum that they're using with the students throughout the year and making sure that it's a comprehensive curriculum and they do a nice job with that. Um, one thing I did notice was missing, and I know you did an update to this policy last year allowing, um, us to consider homeschool students to participate in athletic and other activities, which um, several families have reached out to take advantage of this year, which is, was a really nice change. But, um, I'd really love to be able to, um, request mid-year progress reports from our families, um, just so I can check in mid-year to see how everything's going, see if there's anything that we can do to help support them. Um, just make sure the students are being educated and are on track to achieve what the family set out in the proposals that they sent in. So that was one piece. Um, and the other piece I just wanted to add at the bottom was just to, um, clarify that the district is not responsible for providing curriculum materials to students that are in a, approved home-based programs. That has come up a couple of times during the year. And it's especially tricky when we have students that were, um, educated in district that move into homeschool programs and may have been participating in some online programs within our curriculum that the families would love them to be able to continue at home, but we're not able to take kids out of classes and make it like a private kind of, um,
Right.
situation where they're able to take their assessments, um, online once they're in a homeschool program. So I thought it was important to just clarify that within the policy. Um, and when I send the approval letters out, once I've reviewed everyone's homeschool program, I'd like to be able to mention in that letter that we will be reaching out to them for mid-year progress report.
Okay. And is there a vendor or multiple where they access curriculum?
There's a number of, um, there's a whole homeschool community out there where families support each other. Um, and there's a lot of resources that families can access. Uh, or families could choose to access, use the same curriculum that Duxbury Public Schools is using, but purchasing it on their own. So that we're not managing textbooks and online subscriptions because we really aren't able to take kids out of the Duxbury system to be able to have that be private. So, um, and we're glad to provide resources if anyone asks us, um, different mechanisms and programs that they could access if they're having trouble locating materials, but they generally have already researched them, um, and are able to present that with their proposal initially.
Okay. How does that work with like Envision? Can they buy an Envision program themselves? I would think that wouldn't be profitable for the.
I'm not sure how it works in terms of some of the homeschooling programs. I'm sure you can buy single licenses for some of those. Um, I don't, they'd have to reach out to the publisher directly, but I'm sure that families access things on Amazon and just.
I think there's a whole, you know, conferences that you can go to.
Yeah.
Stuff like Danielle said, it's like, so I suspect that they make software packages just for.
Just for homeschooling, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And sometimes the kids will come out for middle school assembly and then come back to us.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the mid-year check-in is.
Right. We have kids that start off the year in our district and then move into a homeschool program and vice versa. We have some students that began the year in homeschooling and came into the district, so.
What would the mid, what would the progress report look like? Is that something that you guys would put together?
Um, I think I, I would be pretty flexible with families however they want to present those progress reports. They're, they're excellent and organized about how they present the curriculum to us in the first place. So I, I would allow families to do that however they see fit because everyone's program is so different.
Yeah.
Um, we'd want them to be able to. And if they had questions about that, we could, I could answer any questions individually, but we have kids in all sorts of, not only curriculum, but just different horseback riding and so many swimming and so many creative ways that families are getting that physical activity in and just, you'd be surprised at the, the creativity on the programs that are being provided. So I think they'd be able to figure out how to report on all of that.
They do have a lot of flexibility. The, the law, uh, provides homeschools a lot of, uh,
Right.
kind of protections, not the exact right word.
Well, apparently my eight-year-old's been hearing about it because he keeps asking me now. No offense, but yeah.
No, and I'm not trying to encourage any of our.
And what does Nittol say?
No, we want to keep our students in district.
Please go ahead and explain to you why that's not.
I'm not here to encourage any additional homeschooling. We want to keep our students in school if possible, but this is a nice option for families in different situations.
All right, and then you get the strategic planning process update for us.
Yes. So this evening, I just wanted to give you a brief update of where we are because this process is something that we started back in the summer. At our administrative retreat and I know Mr. Farmer presented to you at the beginning of the year what the outline of the plan was going to be and, um, Tim Farmer, our, last year, he was our interim assistant superintendent. He just did a fantastic job helping organize. This is a really comprehensive process of strategic planning. So we're so grateful that he was able to.
So he's not involved anymore?
He's, he's still willing to, um, work with us in any way that he can be helpful, but, um, he really was, it was essential, it was such a huge help for him to be able to kind of lay it out, do the trainings, facilitate the focus groups, bring the committee together and just give us an outline of how the process would take place. So most recently, we met with Tim and I feel like it was in January.
As a full group.
As a group?
As a full group.
I met with him today.
Yeah, I feel like, not so long time ago. We've seen him since then, but, um, the last time he met with the entire group was in January, which it feels like it was about two weeks ago when I thought about it today. Um, that was the last time the entire committee came together. And at that time, he presented a draft synthesizing a lot of the information that was gathered throughout the focus groups and the initial meetings with the entire strategic planning committee. And at that time, we, um, attempted to narrow down what our focus areas would be and to start to think about what some of those strategic goals would be. So most recently, we had a draft of the strategic plan and we did a meeting with the, um, administrative team to, we're, we're trying to narrow things down. And so we're, this is still a work in progress because I know, um, what we have before you is not perfect in terms of the wording of mission statement, vision, core purpose and core values, which I will read, but, um, we're getting there and we're starting to feel like we have a good, um, we've narrowed down what our pillars are going to be and within those, we're developing some, what we think are really strong strategic goals to move the district forward in the next few years. And so we're getting excited about where we are now because it's starting to come together. Um, we had different committees that worked on each of these statements and it's very difficult to come to an agreement on some of the words. So you spend, so you can spend an hour talking about one word and you look at the clock. You know, like we've been talking about the word empathy versus compassion for an hour now. Let's move on. Um, just for example, the mission statement, we were trying to include the purpose of what we do here, how we do it, why we do it and for whom into maybe five words. And so when you start to really think about making these, um, these statements, it's very difficult and you have a group of people working on it. So with that, we're starting to get very close. Um, currently, as it stands today, the mission statement, um, that we're proposing with knowing that this is still just in draft, the mission of the Duxbury Public Schools is to inspire curiosity and empathy. And we're still debating some of these things.
I mean, you know, just, just to highlight this or put a spotlight on it, that this is probably the one that maybe needs the most work. Ironically, we spent the most time on it. Uh, but some of the initial feedback, uh, we might need to do a little, uh, I don't know, editing, if you will.
Right.
And, uh, potentially some consolidation, so, um, but anyway, let, I'll let Danielle go on.
Um, vision statement, we separated into three separate sections. We had an academic vision, a social vision and a global vision. So our academic vision, every student in Duxbury Public Schools will be provided with a high-quality education aligned with the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks that includes opportunities to cultivate their own individual interests and passions. Our social vision, the Duxbury Public Schools will prioritize students' social and emotional well-being in an environment that celebrates equity, tolerance, humanity and life balance. And our global vision, students in Duxbury Public Schools will be empowered citizens who understand the interconnected social, political and cultural systems of the world. And so core purpose and mission, and mission can sometimes seem to be similar statements, but, um, that's something that we're going to be working on. We want to make sure it's clear and it flows and everything is interconnected. Our core purpose, the core pur- core purpose of the Duxbury Public Schools is to provide each student with the opportunity to achieve personal and academic excellence. And our core values, which were narrowed down to these four bullets here, students first, academic excellence, integrity and equity and inclusion, we can put into one. And those core values, we want to be at the heart of every decision we make and everything we do. Uh, we talked a little bit about having those core values be part of interview questions and just making sure that every decision we make, um, reflects those core values. So the core values are really important. We want to make sure we capture what those values are so that we can all live by them. And the four pillars will be the four strategic goal areas. And so under each of these four pillars, we foresee that there will be about five strategic goals that we identify as the big things that we need to work on in the next three to five years. Um, and we'll have focus areas under, under those strategic goals that are also some part of that pillar, but maybe work that we're already, is already underway or maybe isn't worthy of being a, a strategic goal, but something a little bit more focused. So pillar one, social and emotional well-being. Pillar two, program expansion. Pillar three, global learning and community partnerships. And pillar four is to advance student learning. And under each of those four pillars, we were able to encompass a lot of the feedback that we received from focus groups and from our district administrative team that really highlights uh, where we see the district going in the next three to five years. I'm not sure how long this plan will stand. Once it's written, it might be something that we write with three years in mind, um, where we might want to think about that this plan might need to kind of carry us a little bit further. But, um, it's definitely the work. Uh, you can hear the voice of the, um, committee members in the plan and we certainly took a lot of, um, feedback and ideas from the students and the parents and the community members that took the time to complete the survey that we had, um, as part of our strategic planning and the focus groups that people spent hours coming out, um, to be able to share their individual concerns. At the same time with that, I will say, there were some really specific, um, ideas that came out of those focus groups. So I just want to caution that every single idea was not able to be included in that. And so um, I don't want people to feel disappointed that their one really strong opinion didn't get reflected in that. And so we want to, we tried as much as we could to take a collective voice, but, um, we certainly heard some of the individual concerns. So we'll work to incorporate those the best we can as well.
Well, um, I thought that, uh, that this was a very strong, um, draft. Uh, and I thought, uh, to me, it seemed that the vision statement, the core purpose, the core values, the pillars were very much, um, uh, kind of showed continuity from what we have been working on. There's not this kind of, all of a sudden, you don't get the feeling that your head is swiveling, right? Um, so, and I thought that was valuable. Um, I also think that there's great, uh, kind of integration. Uh, if you think of these as levels between vision statement, core purpose, core values, pillars, there's great integration through the levels. You're focusing on the same issues in different ways. Um, so I thought that was great. I do have a problem with the mission statement. And, um, and I, first of all, I don't feel as well-integrated with the rest of what, what's here. It seems to stand out a bit separate from everything else that's, um, that's included. So that kind of got my attention. I also feel like it doesn't really do justice to, to everything else that's on the page and everything else that goes on in our schools. I didn't recognize it, right, as being
Right.
what I am familiar with. And, and the last thing I'm going to say, um, is perhaps influenced by the fact that I've spent, I don't know, eight or nine hours in town meeting over the past few days. And I'm really not convinced that, um, if, if we're asking people for thirty-seven million dollars in operating funds, that we can stand up and say, we're doing that to inspire curiosity and empathy. I think that that's a bit limp. I think, uh, just from that perspective, it's, there's a real dissonance for me.
I.
And given that we're looking forward to, um, you know, arguing for overrides and stuff, I feel like our mission statement needs to.
Be beefed up a little?
It needs to be acceptable to people who are thinking about investing more money and seeing results. And who are not perhaps familiar with the kind of ed-speak that you get in education circles. I know curiosity is a, is a big um, kind of word at the moment and empathy is also a kind of area where schools are, and schools, and these are valid things for schools to be working on, but that's not what the rest of the world is talking about. And so if somehow you can translate this into kind of more accessible language that reflects really what else is going on in the strategic plan, I would be happier.
Sure, I appreciate your comments. And, um, I don't, I actually, yeah, I agree with a lot of what, I do agree with a lot of what you said. This is a kind of a challenge. a lot of what, I do agree with a lot of what you said, this is a kind of a challenge.
It's very hard to put together a mission statement.
But I would say this, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, a couple of things about it, though, and by the way, that, that, we need to, we need to look at changing it, so.
Okay.
I'll say that, just based on some feedback. But you would never read the mission statement in isolation, right? And so, you know, this page, it'll look different, but this page really always needs to be read together.
Yeah.
And there's a reason it's on one page. So I don't think you'd ever talk about that one thing in isolation, for example, as you're selling a budget or whatever. And I just do want to slightly defend, though, the curiosity and empathy. Curiosity is like the foundation of education, right? Which, right? And empathy is all about, you know, the, understanding a lot of people's perspectives, which, especially in today's world, we have to make a focus. But I think your point's well taken. It's actually, I think, embedded in a lot of other areas here. And so, so, but, so I just want to say, there's a reason why we ended up there, and we spent so much time on it, you know? And so, but, but that's valuable too, right? It's part of the process. And so I think we need to go back to the drawing board a little bit.
And I don't think we're married to it. And we completed the mission, vision, core purpose, and core values very early in the process, before we had even gotten through the focus groups, and we had a lot of the feedback that came in. We hadn't done the survey analysis yet, and we hadn't even gotten close to the point of identifying the pillars and the goal work that we're doing. So I think it makes total sense, now that we have been so close to it all the way through, to have someone else take a look at it and say, this doesn't really match up. It's, it's great feedback for us, because we've been looking at this for six months. But I think that doing that at the beginning, and then coming back to it at the end, will be a really valuable, valuable exercise. And I, I would just like to see joy somewhere in some of these things, because I think when we talk about project-based learning, personalizing, having kids work with their passions, we, we really want to inspire joy in the schools every day, and I think we see joy, and I think we have to find a place for that word to be in there. But certainly, our next steps are to take this back to the administrative team, now that we have a much clearer draft, and we have some of this language cleaned up so that we can make some adjustments specifically with the mission statement that we're feeling a little uncomfortable with at this point, and then looking at the overall strategic goals that we've narrowed down to make sure that they're what they should be.
Okay.
I should add to, oh, I'm sorry, Sharon.
Oh, it's okay. No, I, just one more comment. I think one of the things I remember from the, from some of the working group discussions around the mission statement was that the current one is, is too long and too wordy. And I think there was a real focus on making this rememberable, so that people, it just comes right to mind. So that would be my one concern, is, I think that is actually very important, that it's something that everybody can remember and think of. And if we try to kind of, so I like what John had said, that, you know, you read this all together, and totally agree, like, there can be some changes and stuff, but I just, I would caution against making it too wordy.
Right.
Because we really do want it to be punchy and memorable.
I would agree with that. I think that the, the one, the risk that you have with sort of considering all different types of personas is that you then run the risk of having like a three paragraph mission statement.
Which we're not going there, yeah.
Yeah. And I would, I would also say is, if, you know, the, the people who are edgy about, you know, having to invest $37 million, they're going to be edgy regardless.
No matter what.
Yeah, that's true.
So I don't think, you know, so, I, I, I do agree, though, that, that it does sort of strike me as a little bit sort of separate and apart from the rest of the thing. So I think it's important to, that you, you know, to your point, that the mission statement, or to your point, that the mission statement wouldn't just be read, read sort of in isolation.
I think there's some opportunity, potentially, looking at the core purpose and mission statement together, because it is a little confusing as to sort of what, what the differences are anyway. And I was going to say two things. One is that even though Peter's not here, I've had a similar conversation with Peter about the mission statement, and some of what we talked about is, you know, we probably, I don't want to say it's a problem, but we kind of caused some of what we're talking about here, which is, we were adamant that it was going to be short.
Yeah.
And memorable and all that. And so it, we might have boxed ourselves in a little, a little too much. We didn't want three paragraphs. Of course, I'm the one who made the joke, like, never send me an email more than six words, because I'm not going to read it. So I may put undue pressure on, you know, trying to get something short and sweet. But I, I do think there's some work to be done. But Peter did share very similar concerns, and I should probably represent his concerns here, here tonight as well.
Chip Heath, I mean, have you read Make It Stick by Chip Heath? He's sort of kind of really created this kind of following on, on short, memorable mission statements. His, his rule of thumb is like, seven, seven words or less. Seven words or less.
We need to call Chip.
Yeah. Yeah. But I mean, like, you know.
We have to pass this around, too.
Mission statements are really important, they're really, really difficult. And like, you, you look at some of the most sort of famous and memorable mission statements, and you sort of think that, ah, this is really easy, but they're really not. I mean, I always go back to Disney's mission statement is to make people happy. This is a multi-billion dollar company, that's all it is, is to make people happy. So it, it's, it's not easy. But I really do, I do agree that it, it needs to just be repeatable.
Right.
And memorable. So, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, and we had a lot of discussions about, you know, while I was on core values, and we talked a lot about citizenship, which citizenship isn't in that, but it's what we're creating. So I think it, there was a lot of ed you speak, there were a lot of, like, we'd start with something, and then it would get completely rewritten, and then it would be like, what does that even say now? It's really hard when you have a room full of people.
Yeah.
Right?
And I think some of your words, like citizenship, when you were working in isolation with your values group, and we had citizens in the vision, we felt okay to have, not have every single statement include all of the, there were so many words. There's a million respects and integrity. There's just so many words that we value in our school district, and if you can try to make all of these encompass what is most important to us, there's probably 50 other words that we try to live by every, every day. But, so I think that's where some of the words that your committee might have been feeling strongly about ended up in another statement that we tried to have flow. And I don't know that the flow, like you had mentioned, the missions, mission might not flow with the rest of the words that we came up with.
Right.
I also think that the core values, to me, is like one of, I, I shouldn't rank the level of importance of any of these things, but the core values is another one that we want to be able to refer to, like Danielle's, every single decision we make, every, you know, every time we have an issue. And that also is going to be something that needs to be, you know, kind of top priority first in the, in the marketing sense. But, yeah, it's a challenge. I always say, I just, I do want to thank everybody who participated up till this, this point. The, the, these subcommittees who kind of put all these pieces together really did yeoman's work, and, you know, it's still a work in progress, but we're close. And we hope to have better draft, a clean draft of some of the goal, strategic goals that Danielle was referring to and the focus areas to you by the end of March. And the anticipation is that on April 10th, we'll do a fuller presentation of, of this plan. But we're, we're getting there. It's, and I, I said this to you in writing, and I will just say for the record, it, it has taken us longer than we anticipated for a lot of different reasons. It certainly isn't for lack of effort, and I just want to do it right. And so I think, I, I hope, hope you can appreciate that, and I'm not certainly dragging our feet, but I'd rather get it right.
Yeah.
Or a month, a month late than, than do it, do it halfway.
Yep. But Julia, to your point, like, some of the discussions that came out, when you talk about programming, which you mentioned, you know, we, then that led to a whole discussion about scheduling.
Right.
Right? And addressing, you know, and so then, that goes into the operational budget, what are we offering the kids? Do we need more teachers? Do we, so that sort of gets into the, the money piece a little bit, right? Where we want to head, and how do we want to enhance what we already have and make it better, and, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we tried to make a balance of the strategic goals that are in draft right now. Certainly, some might have a price tag associated with them, but there's many that do not. And so we don't want to write a strategic plan that is only riding on increased revenue coming into the school district. We want to make sure this is doable and actionable, and that we can get started with it right, right when we get back to school, even in the summertime, as we create our new school improvement plans.
Exactly. Exactly.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. That's great, thank you very much.
Cool.
All right, kids, action items. First vote is to approve the revised facilities and field rental fee schedule.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the revised facilities and field rental fee schedule.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to revise policy IHBG, the homeschooling.
So moved. Oh, no, I, yes, I can say that. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to, vote to exempt Duxbury Public Schools from school choice, and we didn't talk about this, but every year, annually, it comes up and we take a vote on whether to be a district that has school choice, and pretty much annually, we vote not to.
Because we don't have space.
Because we do not have the space.
Right.
Do you have any?
No, I don't. I mean, I, I mean, just for anybody paying attention that doesn't understand, school choice simply means that parents and students in other communities could come, come to Duxbury Public Schools, and in turn, we would receive tuition payment, it's not for our pupil, but tuition payment from the state for those districts. I, I think, at this point, school choice is not the right decision for Duxbury. There may be a time in the future where it is. And the reason we would do it is, would simply be for revenue.
Right.
It's actually this real opportunity in, in school choice. We do not have the space, we have high class sizes, we have some programmatic needs, this would absolutely be the wrong time to do it. And Duxbury has historically been a no school choice community. The, the state law does require us to vote each year on it. We actually need to take a roll call vote.
On this?
I believe, but, so I would strongly recommend that we vote no, not to participate this year.
Okay, so can I have a motion to vote to exempt Duxbury Public Schools from school choice?
Okay, I move that we exempt Duxbury Public Schools from school choice.
Second.
Okay, I will do roll call. Matt?
So I'm voting no. Or voting to exempt, so yes.
Sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. Shannon?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
The eyes have it. Okay. Vote to declare surplus items for copiers, and John gave us a, a sheet on that.
Yeah, there's just a couple of quick business items. Cheryl, Cheryl, you know, Cheryl actually helped, does a lot of the work on the copiers, and they're four that are taken out of service, they're old, and they have exceeded their useful life, and we, they may have some value in the open bid market, in this kind of surplus market. And we'll work with Scott Lembeacy, who's the town's operations manager, to do that. But in order to do that, we need to declare them surplus. And so Cheryl has produced a list for you of those four surplus items. I don't, I won't read them if you don't mind, there's a lot of long, long titles and serial numbers, but I'd recommend that we do sort of declare these surplus so we can put them out to bid.
Okay, great. Okay, can I have a motion?
So I move that we declare the items in Dr. Antinuti's list, the four copiers, as surplus.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and our last vote is to approve...
Can I just make a comment on that? Sorry, I mean, I, just, again, just for information, the, the, the need to declare them surplus, to put them out to bid, is, is a compliant with chapter 30B, which is a state brochure law.
Right.
So I just, we're not making that up.
No, we're keeping it legal.
We're keeping it legal, exactly, yeah, compliant, yeah.
Okay, last vote is to approve the donation of a golf simulator. Very exciting.
Yeah, we had a resident who had a, if you've ever used one, you know, one of these golf simulators where you...
Golf.
Where you can simulate golf.
People will use that when we have the field trip to the past, then we can go golfing.
So a, a resident had, had this in a home, I believe they did some kind of renovation, and they don't want to know if we wanted it, and we will, we absolutely wanted it. And so we, we are going to install it. It is partially installed in the fitness center, and it's a great training tool, and we're really excited to be able to offer it to, to our golf, our golf teams, or anybody really for that matter, but primarily the golf teams. We, it does, it does have a value assigned to it, and it's really a value that the resident put on it, and there's a quote attached. That's not really for our purpose, but because it is valued at, in this case, $8,050, it kind of hits a trigger where we need to approve the donation as a, as a school committee. So I recommend approving it, it's great.
I just had a quick question. What's the expected life of the piece of equipment?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have, I'd have to get that answer for you. I'd imagine many years, though.
Okay. Because I just wondered whether, you know, whether there are any, at what, at what point would we want to replace it, and what would, what would that cost us, and more...
So, yeah, so I don't know, I guess more, we might not, if, if that happened, you know? I wouldn't make a significant, necessarily significant investment. Most of this is really, I think, software, right? I mean, it's, it's a computer-generated simulation.
Yeah.
I'll have to find out, so I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Good.
Do you want to hold, or do we actually vote on?
Well, I'm not going to say no to a gift or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I just, I thought...
It's a good, great question, yeah. Sometimes we can't, sometimes we can't afford to take a donation.
That's right.
This wouldn't be the case. I think we'd, we'd make a decision if it ever...
It would be a benefit while it worked.
Yes, yeah. Because, well, again, town meeting, we were talking about the Percy Walker pool, and how it had been a gift to the town, and now it's a very expensive gift.
It's a service.
And so I just thought, well, okay, maybe we ought to ask.
Someone gave my wife a camera as a gift several years ago, and then I realized I had to buy a lens that was like three times this high on the camera. I'm like, that's not, not a very good gift, right?
Yeah. So anyway, no, this is, Mr. Boynton's very kind to give it to us, so of course we want it. So I move that we accept the golf simulator from Mr. Boynton.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, do we have any correspondence, other comments, or any considerations for future meetings?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, come on up, come on up.
Just from tonight.
We inspired you with questions tonight?
Questions? I guess regarding the wellness, which Shannon had brought up. Who, who created the wellness curriculum?
We had a whole committee.
It was a whole conference?
We had a wellness committee because we didn't have a curriculum previously, or we had a very small health curriculum. So a committee was created, and we took some curriculum from like situat and surrounding communities, and put together our own curriculum.
Okay. Is that somewhere to look at? Well, we were just asking, we asked Jim and Tom to kind of send that to us, a curriculum map, and then how, how the instructional units were being distributed across the grade levels, so that we could understand what was being proposed.
Okay, but now the committee's not active anymore, so now the curriculum is owned by...
Well, that's what I want to make the point. We, we are responsible for the curriculum.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the recommendations came out of the committee for some changes, but we would, obviously, we're responsible.
Because I would imagine it should have to be updated, kind of, I don't know, I feel wellness is kind of, I guess it, I was looking, I wanted to see what the curriculum was, because my son watched the, what the health, I'm assuming was in a health class, I don't even know. But he was, you know, he's like, you have to watch it. He yelled at me for serving him meat, you know? You know, which is all, it was all great, but it just opened my eyes to, you know, what else is there? You know, and then I did watch it, and I did think it was great, but I think, like, I agreed with 90% of it, there was 10% in there I didn't, and there's like a lot of other, I, I'm really into all that stuff, so it just brought up, I think you have to have a lot of input, not, and I don't, maybe that's not just the only one, so that's what that's not just the only one. So that's what kind of made me think, all right, what else is he, but I'm sure I'll hear about it if they see something else that, you know, that I'm doing wrong. So, I don't know, it was just interesting. But I do kind of want to...
There's mass curriculum frameworks for health. We don't have health as a subject in the elementary schools, but topics are covered often in PE classes and some of those special videos that we show students at different points in their schooling aren't part of a curriculum, but they're something that the school, we have the School Wellness Advisory Council, which is a school committee policy that the district have that with members of lots of different groups that represent. Mr. Holgate's part of that. School nurses are part of that. Our district nurse leader, some community members that have experience working on health curriculum. So we do have that committee that we certainly can use as an advisory group in terms of what we do moving forward with our health curriculum and the updates that need to take place. So I think that is a perfect opportunity for some of the curriculum work to take place as part of that mandated committee that we have.
All right. All right, so, good. Hold on. Then the other one was, oh, about the tech. So in sixth grade, you talked about how they would come in at homeroom, drop it, or pick it up, and then have to drop it again. So I'm just thinking of my sixth grader, is it something, at the end of the day, they have to run someplace and drop it, or is it going to be time put in?
There'll be time put in. They won't, they won't have to do that on their own. And so the DMS and DHS principal meet with John and Danielle and I and my staff, or it's sometimes just myself and my staff, and are coordinating all of that. And they're responsible for what happens in their buildings. So I say to her, okay, what do you want to do for sixth grade? We have Chromebooks. And then now we're working that out. So we know that they will likely need to come back to another homeroom at the end of the day, which might be really good for the sixth graders. So then they'll have another landing place, put their laptop away.
Before they go back to their locker. And we are hoping to have bags, correct? So that the students can have something with a handle to safely carry those around, so they're not on top of a pile of books. So that's one of the things that we really want to educate the kids about. If they're carrying these computers around with them for the day, we don't want to see them dropped in the hallway, bounced when they're trying to get into their locker. So the logistics of it, it's just, as Cheryl had said, we were more than one-to-one with all the devices, because we weren't having the kids be responsible for their computer. And I think it will be a great learning experience for them to manage their own computer for a whole year before they take it home.
Yes, yeah.
And all of a sudden, they're responsible for it all the time.
Is that, is that something we should let parents know about a little bit earlier in case they want to, you know, buy a backpack that has a laptop sleeve in it? How do you guys handle that?
Well, I mean, that's an interesting point.
They didn't need to let them have backpacks in sixth grade. They had to have cinch sacks. Is that not a way?
I think we need to be careful with that, because some of the backpacks already are a little bit disorganized. Some have so much stuff in them, and I don't necessarily know that we want to have parents looking for backpacks that have laptop sleeves. We want to be able to provide them with a protective case.
Okay, so kind of like, you have to use this for the laptop.
Yeah, we're hoping to be able to handle that.
Yeah, it's funny, I think we're having a bag meeting tomorrow. Literally, we're having a bag meeting.
Because that's, that's our, that's what we deal with, is the logistics, you know, of the things that are trying to get into the backpack.
It's already part of it, the lunchbox.
And then the other thing was the mission statement. So like, I've dealt with mission statements as well, but the one thing I would say is, when you get it, you'll know. That's the upside. I feel like, you know, I've hit one once, and, you know, then everything just falls.
It's like a wedding dress?
Yes, exactly.
All right, good. Then I don't think we're, we found our wedding dress.
No, you didn't find the dress.
Yes, to the dress.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's great. All right, I don't think we have public comments, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Great, thank you.
Next meeting, April 10th.
Thank you.
I know, we did get to a lot.
Cheryl, thank you, Mr. ...
I'll be back. Ooh, 51 tomorrow.